Good evening. I'm Judy Bateman. I am the first vice president of the League of Women Voters Oakland Area and I'm also a voter service coordinator. Before we begin the evening, I'm going to read the ground rules that the candidates did receive when they got their invitation, but I want the audience to be aware of where we are and what the rules are, okay? The candidate forums are regulated by federal and state election laws and regulations. In addition, important internal revenue service rules apply to forums sponsored by organizations designated as 501(c)(3) by the IRS. League-sponsored forums are governed still further by the League's own nonpartisan policy. The League of Women Voters will mail an invitation to all qualified candidates to participate in a forum the League is sponsoring. Write-ins who have qualified before the date of the forum will be included. The League does not support or oppose any candidate or political party. The League may choose not to sponsor a forum for an office. The League may cancel a forum if only one candidate will be participating. FCC rules for all broadcast forums, FEC rules for federal offices, and LWV policy. The League may cancel during a forum if candidates and/or the audience are not following these ground rules, and we will stop. The moderator will be selected by the League of Women Voters. The moderator will review the ground rules with the audience and the candidates before the start of the forum. The moderator has the responsibility to enforce time limits and the authority to interrupt the candidates or proceedings to enforce the ground rules and format agreed to by the candidates. We usually have a timer with a paddle with a sign. We have something different tonight. We've gone into the electronic age. This thing here is going to tell the candidates they can watch when their time is up and when they have to stop. So that's what they're going to be looking at. The moderator may restate questions received or rephrase them for clarity. The candidates will report to the League representative on the day of the taping, one half hour prior to the starting time. They were here very early, I have to say. Thank you. There will be no substitutes or stand-ins for candidates. If a candidate is unable to attend, a written brief statement may be submitted to the League of Women Voters to be read by the moderator. Its length cannot exceed the time allotted for a candidate's opening statement. The order of who speaks first, second, and so on will either be alphabetical or determined by a drawing, and the initial responder will be rotated such that each candidate will have the opportunity to be first to answer a question. We've divided the candidates into their term that they're running for. So we have the four that are running for a six-year term, and then we have two running for a four-year term and two running for a two-year term. So you know, you will vote for two of these people, one of those, and one of those, okay? Also, when the governor is a Democrat, the Democrats seat first. We don't have a partisan race here, but if this were like a township race or any partisan race, if the governor is a Democrat, the Democrats go first because that's how the ballot is. If the governor is Republican, then the Republicans go first. That's the way it goes. All right. Candidates' remarks will only address their views only and platforms regarding the office they are seeking. No personal attacks or statements implying another candidate's views are allowed. The moderator will stop the speaker from such references and ask the candidate to keep his or her response to his own positions. Candidates will not bring charts, graphs, or other visuals to use during the forum. Candidates may bring paper for taking notes and data they wish to refer to and a copy of their opening and closing statements. They may not use electronic devices. Candidates are not allowed to use audio or video from the forum for commercial or any kind of advertising. This presentation is copyrighted 2024 by the League of Women Voters. All rights are reserved. This video may only be shown in its entirety. So if anybody's taping anything, you are not allowed to show it. This can only be shown from beginning to end. We didn't have them sign a TV realist. That's sometimes the TV people. The audience and candidates will not be allowed to bring campaign banners, signs, placards into the forum room. No visible candidate campaign or political pins, T-shirts, jackets, hats are permitted in this room. No flash cameras, motor-driven cameras, or other visual or sound recording devices are allowed in the forum room other than by the press, the media, and forum sponsor. The audience and candidates will please turn off all pagers and cell phones during the forum. So if you have your cellphone on, turn it off. The audience will refrain from any vocal reaction for or against any candidate or statement made by the candidate. No applause, no laughing, no anything. Quiet, absolute quiet. The audience is requested to remain silent during the forum to maintain an oasis of neutrality and may applaud only when the moderator has announced that the forum has ended. The audience is encouraged to submit written questions, which we've been doing, and we have the index cards and the PTSA is also collecting cards. So if you need to want to ask a question, raise your hand and they'll come and give you a card. In order to help identify pertinent local concerns and issues, one screener who has not identified pro-con regarding any of the candidates or proposals may be from the district featured in the forum. I don't think we have any. So the timer, I'm going to say that we have a different timer now, so that's the way that's going to go. We usually hold up a red sign, stop, but we can't do that now. Okay, this is the pledge the candidates have signed. Candidates have signed. "I have read and promised to abide by the League of Women Voters Oakland Area Candidate Forum ground rules and policies. The forum recording is the property of the Oakland Area League of Women Voters and cannot be used for campaign purposes or any other use without the express written consent of the League of Women Voters. Any video must be shown in its entirety." And I'm sorry I have to say this, but we have had people take snippets of our things out and put it on Facebook, so we are very careful now of telling everybody what the rules are, okay? I'm sure we'll have a great forum. Thank you for listening, and this is Cheryl Mitchell, our moderator, and she will start.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening and welcome to this forum for the Walt Lake School Board Election. Today is September 26, 2024. This forum will be featuring the eight candidates who have filed for the Walt Lake Consolidated School Board. There are four candidates running for a six-year term, vote for two. There are two candidates running for a term ending 12/31/28, vote for one. And there are two candidates running for the term ending 12/31/26, vote for one. Sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland Area. I'm Cheryl Mitchell-Terrio, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted national nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in the leadership role such as this one that has great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight or visit our website at lvvoa.org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, and the sponsors take no The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during this forum. Please turn off all cell phones. We ask that all candidates answer the question with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The questions are asked of all candidates and do not single out any one candidate. This presentation is copyrighted 2024 by the League of Women Voters. All rights are reserved. All candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened for duplication and appropriateness by sending Peltonen, Bonnie Guttov, and Maxine von Schein. We have several pages that are here today, and they will be circulating with paper and pencils for your questions, so just raise your hand if you would like to submit a question. We also have coordinators Judy Bateman and Ann Megalysey here, and please again remember to turn in your questions to those pagers. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given one minute for their opening statements in alphabetical order and by those terms of office. Closing statements will be one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer will be the technology that you see before you on the screen that is provided by Walt Lake TV. Candidates for the six-year term are Tricia Auton, Rebecca Behrens, Susie Crafton, and Mark Siegler. You will vote for two. The candidates for the term ending December 31, 2028 are Ron Lippett and Lisa West. You will vote for one. The candidates for the term ending December 31, 2026 are Steve Ricks and Michael Smith. You will vote for one. We will begin with a one-minute opening statement. Ms. Auton.
Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for inviting me to be here, and our community members for taking the time to come out. I am Tricia Auton. I am seeking to get elected for the six-year term position on the Walt Lake School Board. As a passionate advocate for our children and their well-being, I support both physical and mental health is crucial to fostering an environment where our students can thrive. In today's fast-paced world, it is more important than ever to prioritize the health of our students, both physically and mentally. I am committed to promoting programs that encourage regular physical activity, nutritious choices, and mental health awareness. I believe that a healthy body and mind allows students to reach their full potential academically and socially. I understand the unique challenges that our community faces, and I am dedicated to working in partnership with families, teachers, and local organizations to create positive change.
Thank you, Ms. Behrens.
I want to express my appreciation as well to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share my views and perspectives, and I thank you all who are here tonight and participating here. My name is Dr. Rebecca Behrens, and I have been a resident of this school district for 24 years. Before my retirement, I worked at Heron Valley Hospital as an emergency physician. I have treated many students and residents in this district. I have attended school board meetings for the past two years and have engaged in frequent public commentary. Over the past decade, we have seen declining student enrollment and M-step scores on reading and math in Michigan. If stability and longevity and serving on the school board is of value, it should be matched by good outcomes and results, and in my view, it doesn't. I think it is time for a new and fresh approach for more involvement of school board members in setting the vision and policies to be achieved by collaboration with our able teachers and administrators, and this is why I am running for the school board.
Ms. Crafton.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the PTSA Council for hosting this forum. I'm Susie Crafton. I was, I am a newly appointed board member as of June of 2024, and I'm running to retain a position on the board in the six-year term. I recognize many faces in this room tonight because of my sustained involvement across the district. As many of you can attest, I've been all-in for Walt Lake Schools since my husband Clay and I decided to move our family back into my childhood home in 2018. We made that choice because we knew that our children would thrive in this district. We value the diversity that is celebrated, the inclusive environment that the educators foster, and the strong academics balanced with preparation for real life. Professionally, I help public school systems design and fund innovation efforts, which means I deeply understand school funding and the legislative process. It's time to combine my skills, deep commitment, and strong relationships to be a force for good in our community. I look forward to moving forward together.
Mr. Siegler.
Good evening. My name is Mark Siegler. I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening for this forum. My family has resided in the district for over 40 years. Both of my children had their complete K-12 education in the Walt Lake Consolidated School District. I take pride in our growth and educational opportunities offered to our children. I take pride in our diversity as a parent and as a board member. I've been involved PTA during my entire life here in Walt Lake. I am a founding member of the Lakes Area Diversity Council, as well as a founding and current member of the Board of Education, of the Foundation for Excellence. I have advocated for the district in Lansing and Washington. I am also sitting on the Board of Directors for Oakland County School Board Association and Michigan Association of School Boards. I come again to offer experience, insight, knowledge, and wisdom as we move forward in these turbulent times. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lippett.
Thank you, League of Women Voters and PTSA, and hello Walt Lake community. My name is Ron Lippett, and I was appointed to the school board in May of 2024, and I'm running to retain my position in the four-year slot. My wife Denise and I moved to the district 20 years ago because we were looking for a thriving public school system in which to educate our three daughters, and that decision was rewarded with an absolutely stellar public school experience for them, including our youngest Amelia, who is a junior at Walt Lake Northern right now. Because of this, my family has tremendous affection for Walt Lake Schools. As a parent, the board election from two years ago frightened us. We were concerned with the notion of board overreach, book banning, stripping away protections from our most vulnerable, and it's why I started speaking at board meetings, why I sought appointment this past year, and I was honored to receive that appointment unanimously. I'm running on a slate platform of stability, student success, and safety because I believe these are the foundational elements that we'll need moving forward in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. What, Ms. West?
Okay. Okay, sorry. No problem. Thank you. Thank you to the community and to League of Women Voters and PTSA Council for hosting this. So I'm Lisa West, and I'm running for the four-year position. I have been living in the district my whole life. My oldest daughter will be graduating from Northern this coming spring, and she will be the third generation to be graduating from the district. My husband and I chose to stay, to stay in this district because of the wonderful education that I received growing up. I've been actively involved. I helped coordinate our Disability Awareness Week at Glengarry, and I'm now doing all things marching band as well for my, now that my older kids are in high school. Due to COVID, we chose to homeschool because it didn't work for my family, and I found some severe problems with things like literacy and math, and so I have been speaking at the board meetings and wanting to write this ship. I believe we have a lot of talented educators, but I'm concerned about the curriculum that's involved, as well as safety and security, and so I'd like to get back to that. I believe.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Mr. Ricks.
Hello. I'd like, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this event. My name is Steve Ricks. I'm a husband, a father, and a veteran. My family's lived in this district for the last 16 years. Our son is currently a junior at Walt Lake Northern. I'm running for election to the school board because I value public education, and I want to explore ways to make it better. We have so many talented and caring teachers and staff members. We have students eager to learn and excited about their futures. Our school district was once considered a very elite, a very elite district. It has lost so much of that status, but I believe we can bring it back. I think it's time for some new, refreshing inputs and ideas. I have experience in construction management and cost estimation, and I understand the process of procuring bids and ensuring sound fiscal practices. I believe these skills will be vital to serving as a board member. I proudly served our country in the U.S. Navy, and I look forward to serving the parents of our, and our children of our Walt Lake School District. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters Oakland Area, along with the Walt Lake PTSA for hosting the event and the community members present this evening. My name is Michael Smith, candidate for the Walt Lake School Board, two-year partial-term seat, but many of those around me call me Coach Mike. I am a proud PTA member, graduate of Walt Lake Schools from Head Start to high school. I attended Decker, Dublin, CHS, and this wonderful high school, Walt Lake Central. I'm a lifelong resident of White Lake Township, where I currently reside with my wife and two children, who are currently students at Dublin and CHS. I've been a dedicated public servant for the past 20 years, where I have held management roles in local government. I was elected and served on the Walt Lake School Board from 2010 to 2013, but took a step back and prioritized being present with my growing family. My heart is here, and that's why I'm running again, as I watch my kids grow older and reap the same benefits that I receive from Walt Lake Schools. I'm proud to watch them grow as students and leaders with the support of our amazing educators and staff, and that has motivated me to give back. I want to chart a path of success ahead for all students and move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second question, we'll start with Ms. Behrens. What do you feel are the top three responsibilities of the Walt Lake Consolidated School District?
I believe that the three top issues that I think are of critical concern would be declining enrollment, teacher shortage, and literacy and math scores that are not where they should be. Declining enrollment, is this just a declining birth rate issue? Why are parents removing their children from public schools in favor of charter, private, or religious schools? Let's get to the bottom of what is the driving factor in our school district. Teacher shortage, maybe teacher pay needs to be looked at, maybe less administrative hires and more funds directed to teachers. Literacy and math scores. Recent M-step scores for reading are at a 10-year low for third graders. This decline existed before COVID. Why? It seems to me that a change of vision and priorities needs to be established on the school board to get a real handle on this problem.
Ms. Crafton.
Point of clarification, the question was top responsibilities of the district, correct?
The top three, yes.
Thank you. So the top three responsibilities of the school district are very clear. We promote student success by providing strong academic standards-aligned curriculum. We support our teachers in the efforts to support those students, and we provide safety and stability to the community. When a school district achieves those responsibilities and allows students and teachers to thrive, our community also benefits. Your property tax rates, or sorry, your property home values will likely go up when we have a strong school system. When the community is involved and parents are active in their young people's lives within support of education, everyone benefits. It's the responsibility of the school district to allow opportunities for the community and parents and educators and students to work together. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler.
I would say the first thing is safety, ensuring that all of our staff, our children, all of our employees in our district are in a safe and properly supervised learning environment, collaborating with experts, first responders, agencies to help us do that. Stability, bringing stability and experience to our school boards, setting socially unconscious physical responsibility policies, welcoming the knowledge and experience of our incredible staff and all of the parents that want to offer their part. Student success, providing the support and career preparation needed for our students, not only for those that are going on to college, but also offering CTE programs and programs that will benefit our children because as we are well aware, not every child will go to college, and we have to prepare those students that are not going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lippett.
Yeah, I don't think it's an accident that our slate of like-minded candidates chose our platform as stability, student success, and safety. These are the three pillars of responsibility to the district, and under stability, I don't want to say exactly what Mr. Siegler and Ms. Crafton said, but I just want to talk about the notion of our superintendent. We've had two, three superintendents in two years, so if we're going to start with stability right there, I think the notion of keeping superintendent, keeping the cabinet, staff, and administrators, teachers, all the folks that do the great work that keep this district stable and a place where families want to come and bring their kids through public education, I think that's for starters. The notion of being fiscally conscious, and how about collaboration? I, you know, I think this is something at the board level in particular that we could learn a lot from right now. I think there is a collaboration opportunity that I expect to take advantage of once we're in the new session of the board. I think we can accomplish great things when we collaborate.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Yes, I believe that top three responsibilities are for us to work with our superintendent on things like our curriculum. We have our literacy scores declining. Nearly half of our students are not proficient in reading, and so I think we need to go ahead and take a serious look at that, work with the cabinet regarding that. We also need to make sure that our students and staff are safe. Without a safe environment, you cannot go ahead and have proper learning. We also need to consider the decline in our enrollment, and with that, you know, if we can't have a decent enrollment, if it can use the decline, we will go ahead and not be able to retain as many teachers. So I think we need to go ahead and look at that so we can continue staffing.
Thank you. Mr. Ricks.
I think one of the topics would be budget. We have a $250 million bond that was just issued. There's going to be a lot of projects that need to be scoped properly, money spent in the right places with the right people, making sure projects are done on time and on budget. I believe safety is another topic that we need to seriously look at for our students. There's a lot lacking that I think we could be better at, and I think that should be looked at. And then the technology. I think we need to ensure our children have the right technology in the classrooms to properly do the work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Sure. The top three, I believe, are stability, student success, and safety, as discussed. We need to bring stability back to this board. We do, as stated just now, we do have a lot on the horizon with the bond. We need to make sure that we're socially conscious and fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money, making sure that we're charting a path forward that is leading us and preparing our students for the future. We have to make sure we're supporting our teachers and make sure that we're supporting our students for career preparation needed for a successful future. We want to make sure that our students and our teachers are thriving in our district and growing, and that we're good stewards of the finances. That is our thing here, is that as educators and as, when we're up here running for this office, is that we're making sure that it's every child every day, that we're wanting to make sure that we're focusing on that, making it a safe and a welcoming place for learning for all students and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Auton.
My top three concerns are literacy, safety, and future preparation for our students. My concern grew out of the reaction to COVID. As we have seen, literacy scores decline. Over half of our students are barely reading at grade level. I would love an explanation as to why that is. As a concerned parent, as a concerned community member, we need to address literacy. Teachers are leaving the district. As our administration, and we need to understand why, which is why I'm running for this school board, to understand the very answers to those questions. Safety, we need to harden our schools. In my opinion, as a parent, we appear very vulnerable. Although we might have some secret security measures, I think they need to be a little bit more apparent. And I believe the board transparency, we owe it to our community. Those are my top three concerns.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Ms. Crafton. Do you believe taxpayers should be, should continue to fund the district with two millages in the same year?
Absolutely. Our community supports public education. You can see that in the voting records of our last bond and our sinking fund. The millage that's on the table for consideration in November is a non-residential homestead millage, and we have the opportunity to re-up that millage rate once every 10 to 20 years. So this millage is a time-sensitive and important issue. It is roughly 18% of our operating budget, and so if we don't ask the voters to pass this public, to support public education, we will have to see cuts in our operating fund, which means less resources in the classroom and other things we, as a community, I know we don't want to see. So I absolutely think it's in the district's best interest to be seeking this millage renewal now. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler.
We have a budget of over $180 million. The millage renewal amounts to roughly $33 million of assets for our district, for our community over its time. Imagine taking roughly one-sixth of your household budget and eliminating it, and then try to operate everything the way you currently are. It's almost impossible. We have new buildings, but we also have aging buildings. We have aging infrastructure. We need to keep up to standards with everything. We have new laws that are coming that impact us. Yes, the millage is important. It's even more important as an ongoing issue, and we have to support this for our communities and for the betterment of our district.
Mr. Lippett.
Yeah, I mean, we have expectations of this district to maintain it as a terrific public school system, and we're going to need those millages in order to do the types of repairs or capital investments that we're going to need to restructure our district. The fact is, we are a The fact is, we are a district that is changing right now, like it or not. We were once a district of 15, 16,000 folks. We're under 12 now. So there are going to have to be decisions and investments to make this the kind of district that, as I said earlier, my family got to enjoy. So many families are expecting to benefit from in the years to come.
Ms. West.
So I had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Lons this week, and I found it beneficial to understand more of what's happening with the operating fund and why it's being requested this week. And there are concerns about if it doesn't pass, that there'll be cuts that are made across the board, like increased class sizes and lower elementary. I think that our taxpayers should make a decision of what they feel is best for what suits them, what they believe that our district can do, and how it can be most beneficial.
Mr. Ricks.
Yes, I agree with both of them. The bond that was passed was much needed to upgrade buildings and facilities, fields, and everything like that, that the kids take pride in their school. I think that's one thing I've seen a lot of, is there's no pride in the schools. The Waldick Northern football, they have this beautiful field, but nobody wants to play football. We have baseball fields that are in disrepair, easily the worst in our district. Kids don't want to play because of that. They're leaving our district because of that. The millage that's coming up, I think, is also very important. And it's much needed to upgrade or to keep things moving in the right direction and being paid for. So I think we have to vote yes for both of those.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, I'm in great support of this. Millage is time-sensitive, as was stated. It's an investment for moving forward. As where I come from in the local government, it's your operational millage, and that's how you do, as stated. Services get cut, and we need to invest in our community because if you have a good, thriving school district, you have thriving communities, and that's what this is about. We need to make sure that we're planning ahead, making sure that there are no cuts. I'm fully in favor of that. And the bond was more forward-thinking, looking at it. I look at my own school as Dublin. The history there was torn down, and a brand-new, beautiful building was built with some of the proceeds. And moving forward, we're looking that, we're looking ahead, we're going forward to see where we're going to be at, to see where this change in demographics are bringing us. That's why the bond passed with great support of the voters. And I believe this one will as well because you're seeing that we need this operational budget to make sure that we continue to have the great services that the teachers provide, that the students are earning and getting in the school district.
Ms. Auten.
Basically, I am in support of the millage, but I'm also in support of transparency. We don't need to sell a millage to you, community members. We just need to give you the facts and let you vote yes or no on those millages. That's where I am with the millage.
Ms. Behrens.
I am supportive of this millage of 18 mills with what's called a Headley cushion. Without that cushion, in the last decade, there's been a loss of $13 million in revenue for the school district. And you know, the larger issue is that there's been a decrease in per pupil foundation funds from Lansing. This is the first time in over a decade there's not been an increase in the foundation allowance. And when I say foundation, that means the combined state and local funds given to each school district per pupil. So school districts are scrambling all over the state because of the decrease in funding that they were expected. That means potentially larger class sizes, program cuts, teacher and staff layoffs. Now, we don't have the power to determine what the state legislature does in regard to the education budget, but I think at least having a non-homestead operating millage to provide replacement of some of those funds is a step in the right direction.
And the next question, we will start with Mr. Siegler. When M-Step test shows low literacy scores, do you believe the district reading program should be updated or changed?
First and foremost, when you're talking about testing and literacy, we test all students at all academic levels. Nobody is excluded from the test. We constantly research and evaluate our programs and methodology used to deliver this to our students. As a district, we are currently in the top one-third of Oakland County and far exceed the state averages. Yes, we can and still need to improve continually. We need to strive for continued improvement. It should be noted that six of the top nine other districts in Oakland County are using the same teaching methodology as we are. When you look at the M-Step, you are also looking at the results of a one-day test, not the actual results gathered over a year of classroom learning. We use these tests and the results to help us to review, revise, and improve our delivery of educational needs to our students. It should also be noted that we use a small group instruction and strategies to assist addressing students' needs as well as specialized reading programs.
Mr. Lippett.
Yeah, there is no doubt that our district has an opportunity to improve these scores and understand why they are, the way they are, and the impact of COVID in particular. But I just want to make sure that we understand, as a board member, I have absolute faith in our superintendent, the cabinet, and the administrators, and our teacher, and the education professionals that do what they do. And this is something we need to point out, that this is where a board of education, a board member stays in their lane and relies on the superintendent and team to come back to the board with their set of recommendations about how to achieve the type of results that we're expecting based on what we saw for M-Step scores. It's not the moment for the board to go penetrate that veil and talk about curriculum and content and talk about ways that they think they, that's not their job. So my expectation would be the superintendent to come to the board, make a strong set of recommendations against what we're trying to achieve through the M-Step scores, allow us to ask questions, and then make a decision.
Ms. West. So I do believe that we should consider looking at new curriculum. Our Back to Basics team of candidates is very concerned about literacy and the problems that are in our district. Both the iReady score data and the M-Steps, both are very comparable. About 38% to 48% of kids are reading at grade level. So it means over 50% are not. And our very foundation of education is literacy. So although I believe that, you know, this is the job of the administration, we do as a board need to go ahead and discuss this with our, with the superintendent and make sure that we can get this up to date. We need to make sure that our schools, our kids get that, go to school for our foundation so that they are prepared for our future. We want to make sure that it isn't due to poverty, multilingual homes, like a parent's that are reading at home. This may play a part of it, but that's not all of it. And so we need to make sure that this is addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Ricks.
Experts across the nation and in England and Australia say that flawed curricula is often the core of this problem and low reading scores. The approach to reading in America has been challenged for decades by cognitive scientists, reading experts, and educators. Only in recent years has the education establishment started paying attention. We are told to trust the experts, but what did this get us? The head of Oakland County Literacy Council told one of my fellow candidates that the Lucy Colkins Balanced Literacy Method for Reading has caused untold damage to generations of children. Colkins apologized in 2018 for this and decided to rebalance her approach. So she started including phonics, among other things. Many experts say it is still flawed and needs to be challenged. We are using the Colkins Units of Study as our school district. Is this why so many of our students are not reading at grade level? Those are one of the questions I'd like to ask to our superintendent and teachers.
Mr. Smith.
As stated before, as well, I'm not an educator, but I trust the knowledge and the experience of our educators and our cabinet. They're the ones that come forth with the data, and then we ask questions and we see, of course, we want to improve these scores. We need to improve them. As was stated, it was one day of testing, and we don't see a full scope of what the students are about and what they know and their knowledge base and what the teachers are providing to them. I know with my own children, I think sometimes there's anxiety with testing and other things like that that you have to look into, that the scores aren't our full scope of what is going on. And there are other programs that you work with the teacher as a parent, and you develop a plan that works with them, and you can see amazing leaps and bounds, especially when you talk about iReady scores from the three times that it goes through. So M-Step is purely a one-day test, and I think that, of course, we want to always improve. We can always improve. I think with anything in life, you know, with growth, with thriving, with everything that is going on, is that you need to improve. But I will always trust and have absolute faith in our staff that presents any of this information to us.
Ms. Auten.
Why is it that despite the dramatic increase in federal spending on K through 12 schools in the last 45 years, the nation's report card scores remain low and flat? Is poverty the reason? Scholars have looked at this, not always. They found that in Poland, kids from poorer homes scored higher than American kids from homes better off economically and who had at least one parent with a college education. The philosophy in today's education circles seem to be that we should be concentrating on achievement and worrying about getting all students to grade-level proficiency. Instead, as long as improvement is noted, that is sufficient. But that allows enormous achievement gaps to persistent students as they socially promote onward. It amounts to kicking the can down the road. Surely, there has to be a better solution for our district.
Ms. Behrens.
I would say that one-day testing is being deemed as maybe not valid and not suggestive of where we really are at. But if the test scores show that there's improvement, we tend to celebrate that in our school districts. So either testing is accomplishing what it needs to do or it's not. We recognize that there are factors beyond the control of our schools that impact literacy. Kids are so distracted with digital devices, entertainment, lack of discipline at home. Too often, education's not given top prioritated home. It's a cultural issue. All the more reason to patch up those gaps as much as possible when making sure that schools are doing the utmost to maximize their teaching methods and curricula. We cannot maintain a free and prosperous society with growing numbers of uneducated citizens. We now have what amounts to remedial high schools on college campuses to catch kids up. Even Harvard has a remedial math class for freshmen. What is Harvard doing admitting students without basic high school math skills? Surely, we can do better in our district, and we need to ask the questions to promote that.
Ms. Crafton.
Kids learn how to read differently, and this has been a topic. The pendulum has swung on it for the last 50 years. My belief is that our educators need a differentiated set of tools to reach kids for how they learn best. The role of a school board member is to look at data trends and ask questions of the superintendent and the cabinet. So that's exactly what I did on this issue. And I found out that our last year's spring administration of iReady to this past year's spring administration of iReady, every single grade level grew more than one grade in reading. And the gaps are mostly in vocabulary and comprehension. So we're focusing, as a district, on vocabulary and comprehension, and we expect to see with those promising iReady scores improvements in M-Step. We absolutely need to improve our literacy rates as measured by M-Step, but I'm very encouraged for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Lippett. We will start with the next question with you. Do you believe in banning books, and what criteria would be used, should be used?
So second part of the question, what criteria would we use? Is that what you asked?
Should be used.
Should be used, okay. So categorically, no, I do not believe in banning books. So again, I would just say this, I have absolute faith in our administration, our educational professionals to make recommendations of the content that our students are going to need in order to excel, achieve, and do great in our schools. I would just say this, that when books are purchased, they're either purchased in bulk for the curriculum, or there are co-curricular books that teachers recommend that add value to the curriculum. And this seems to be where some of the issue is, these co-curricular books that are one-off. So I'm really pleased that our district has a really robust process by which parents can ask questions and have content reviewed. That being said, I will add, in Waldick schools, no, there's no book bans, but we have an audit process that achieves the same result. We have eight books right now that are off the shelves with no sense for when they're going to come back yet. I want to solve that.
Ms. West. So I do not believe in banning books at all. I do believe there's a lot of disinformation about what book banning means and that it means that they are not made available anywhere. So I'm not asking for any of that. I do want to make sure that we have, we make, take special consideration to apply to material in school libraries. So it's not about viewpoint diversity as it applies to adults. It's about protecting children. It makes sense to assess books as, to make sure they are age-appropriate, just like we do with movies, G, P, G, PG-13, or R. So I don't believe that it's beneficial for graphic material to end up in the hands of children or young kids. So yes, school libraries need to provide a wide variety of topics to encourage kids to read. As an educator, I do believe in that. But I also believe there's a line that should not be crossed as to the content. And by that, I mean graphic depictions of sex and violence.
Mr. Ricks.
If teachers, school administrators, and librarians do not understand the difference between book banning and restricting material that is not age-appropriate, then I would ask them this question. Why do you think graphic depictions of sexual material and violence should be made available to children? Hiding behind the notion that a particular book has literary merit and value does not answer that question. Again, how does graphic and explicit descriptions of sex and violence benefit children? I don't believe anyone really wants to answer that. To say that removing an age-inappropriate book from the school library is a slippery slope leading to censorship is foolishness. Adults who really value the need to protect children oppose this assault on the innocence and well-being of their children. Our Back to Basics team of Auten, Behrens, West, and Ricks understands this well, and we will not hesitate to protect the children in our school district.
Mr. Smith.
No, to answer the first question. We are allowed to ask questions as board members, and I know my fellow Slate members of the Class of 2024 are all in favor of this approach. We know that we have a committee in place to handle the review made up of many stakeholders for content review and auditing, as was stated. But we, I also understand that we also need a way for parents to opt out. Not everyone has the same background, religion, belief system, or upbringing, and some items might be triggering to some. As someone who's adopted myself, I know that probably growing up, there might have been some fear of abandonment issues that were in some stories. So I think that's important. As a parent, you go talk to the teacher. That I'm sure my parents had that conversation with those, and I think you have to have that balance. But I have absolute faith in our staff to pick age-appropriate curriculum and co-curricular books. And our slate here is all in favor that, no, we will not ban books.
Ms. Auten.
I trust that the aforementioned committees, educators, administrators, and librarians have much expertise in choosing a variety of books that will benefit children and expand their horizons. But if they cannot recognize that a line is being crossed when they have no problem with graphic materials in schools and appeal to their authority, and so-called expertise carries no weight with me. As parents in the community and taxpayers, we have a right to voice our concerns and say no when needed. There is a ton of research showing the harm to children of pornography exposure to graphic violence. There is no excuse, in my opinion, for educators in charge of children not to know this. Connect the dots. Pornography leads to hypersexualization of children, dysfunctional relationships, sexually transmitted infections, teen pregnancies, makes abuse seem normal, anxiety, depression, suicidal risk, and the list goes on. It makes children and teens.
Thank you. Your time is up. Ms. Behrens.
You know, some have said that a call for removal of pornographic material from school libraries is racist and an attack on LGBTQ students. This is blatantly false in a deliberate attempt to deceive and confuse the public. Any sexually explicit material, whether it pertains to straight or gay individuals, is what the objection is all about. Any sexually explicit material is objectionable regardless of the individual's ethnicity who is betrayed. It is disingenuous to conflate these issues. We would hope that our educators, administrators, and librarians in our school district exercise wise and sound judgment on this matter. To not do so is an abdication of their duty to protect children and to safeguard them from physical, emotional, and social harm. Now, some would twist legal fine points like a pretzel to justify inappropriate material. I and my fellow candidates, Auten, Behrens, West, and Ricks, will promote policies that truly will be for the benefit of children. It's just plain common sense.
Thank you, Ms. Crafton.
Hi, I'd like to remind you all, I'm a parent in the district. I have parented an elementary student, a middle school student, and now two high school students. I have never seen pornography in our classrooms, and I don't know what the other candidates are speaking of. I, let's be plain, I do not support book banning, and I do support the district's existing policy that allows parents to object and request alternative assignments for their own student. Teachers can't anticipate every issue that might be problematic for a child. We know our children and our family values. I encourage parents to proactively contact their child's educator to alert them to any special concerns so they can be informed if a topic might be coming up. For example, I had a middle school student who lived through eight hurricanes in Houston and was going through a science lesson that was on climate change, and I knew they might get triggered. So I. get triggered, so I put a teacher aside.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next question will begin with... I'm sorry, Mr. Siegler, sorry.
No problem. I'm not in favor of banning censorship or restricting books for age-appropriate in our buildings. As stated, we have a committee in place of community members, teachers, and administrators to review and recommend books to the board for our library as well as texts that is presented in our classroom. Again, I am not an educator. I rely on these individuals to make that suggestion and recommendations. We have opt-out policies for any parent who would choose to do so, as previously mentioned. You know, as a grandparent, I interact very closely with my grandchildren. My 12-year-old granddaughter, a few weeks ago, I was talking to her about book banning, and she looked at me and she goes, Papa, anything that they tell me I can't read or they don't want me to read, I can find it right here on my phone or my iPad. And honestly, if they say they don't want me to read it, doesn't that make me want to read it even more? Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Ms. West. Do you support the board's policy on diversity, equity, and inclusion, D E I?
So when taken at face value, diversity, inclusion are wonderful things. We can learn so much from all people who are different from us, and it doesn't cost much to give a little kindness to other people. It should be practiced by everyone. Unfortunately, these two ideals, coupled also with equity, have turned political. Instead of diversity, equity, inclusion, creating positive outcomes, they have done the opposite. Instead of making everyone equal, these ideals have made other people less than. Instead of creating equity of opportunity, these ideals have tried and failed at creating equity of outcomes. As it relates to our school district, we should be providing equal opportunities to all students and meeting students and families where they are to achieve success. As a board member, my role would be to be part of the team that creates the vision and policies for the district to ensure spending aligns with those plans. The board should be focusing on the district, how the district is running as a whole, and not what needs to happen in smaller circles.
Mr. Ricks.
Diversity, equity, inclusion, though maybe well-intentioned, has often become divisive. Why? Because it emphasizes differences based on race, ethnicity, biological sex, gender identities, self-identity with groups. This means that some students are made to feel that they have been born with bias or are less than other students. This is wrong and un-American. All students need to feel included and treated with respect. Students with special needs, high-achieving students, athletes, musically or artistically gifted students, LGBTQ students, students with interest in pursuing the trades or technical areas, all of them. I don't believe in putting D E I imperatives before education. We can do better than this. Unity is the strength of our nation, not the divisiveness of group identity politics.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, I do believe in the D E I proposals. We need staff and policies that support all voices and all of our students, and we need staff that look like our students, so they know that they feel safe when they come in, that there's someone there that looks just like them. We need diversity of ideas, of backgrounds, cultural competencies, and discussions, and understanding. We need to celebrate our differences and be inclusive for the success of our students. With student success and openness, that is what really helps promote the growth and moving forward in life. In many different times, having these proposals on the docket there, it provides preparation for future life, and I believe that is imperative that we continue to offer these in the district.
Ms. Autton.
When we talk about equality of opportunity, let's be clear about what this means. We recognize that not all students begin from the same starting point. For example, let's look at special needs students. Certainly, they need a different and customized set of opportunities to progress and advance. However, it is contrary to human nature and reality to get everyone to the same finish line, which is what equity implies. Otherwise, what happens? In order to require the same outcomes, standards are often lowered or watered down to get everyone to the finish line. This is troubling for all of society. Don't we want doctors, lawyers, electricians, members of the military, to have rigorous educations and expectations that are fully capable? We are serving our students better by giving them the maximal opportunities and assistance coupled with rigorous expectations.
Ms. Behrens.
When people are hired for a job, the best candidate should be hired, not someone who is hired to check a box. If we promote people forward based on their group identity rather than their achievement level, we are not doing them any favors. They are often, as a result, insecure and not confident in their job performance. When we water down standards to move certain members of groups ahead, it has been described as the soft bigotry of low expectations. We need to take a long, hard look at curriculum, teaching methods, classroom discipline, wherever there may be barriers to students moving ahead academically. Schools can't solve all these problems. A culture of education and discipline needs to begin in homes. Now, you know, corporations and universities are moving away from D E I because of its negative aspects. We believe that our back-to-basic emphasis is the right approach to help bring out the positive aspects of D E I while mitigating its negative drawbacks.
Ms. Crafton.
Diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's what D E I stands for. Diversity makes our community stronger. We know that at our core. Your values and my values are the same. We are stronger because of our diversity. Equity means bringing all of the people in our beautiful community to high achievement. That is my expectation of our equity policy. But I want to spend a few minutes on inclusion. Inclusion is absolutely essential for students to be seen, supported, and heard. That means they need teachers that look like them, and that is challenging in our teacher shortage scenario across the nation. If students are seen and supported by teachers that look like them, they thrive, and that's the job of the board.
Mr. Siegler.
I am in complete support of our diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. We live in a never-changing society. Our district, as we have witnessed over time, is a template of diversity, equity, and inclusion in action on multiple levels. We have seen it grow. We need to continue to foster inclusivity for all, diversity, education, listening, and learning from one another in order to reduce conflicts, to develop compassion and understanding. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is more than race or religion, affirmative representation, disability awareness, language comprehension, acceptance of views, or socioeconomic needs. It is an understanding, a learning, an improvement to our life skills, a respect process that we must continue to instill in our society as well as our children.
Mr. Lippett.
Yeah, I have been M today and will continue to be a passionate defender of D E I programs, particularly in our schools. In my professional life, I am a corporate executive. I am responsible for bringing together diverse environments. We have a robust D E I program here, and study after study after study shows that diverse environments produce stronger results cumulatively and individually than ones without D E I programs. I'll continue to defend that. The notion of being seen and respected and empowered, I refuse to give up on that, and that is such a need in our school, particularly today. So I just want to say this, that our motto as a school system, the very motto itself is "Every Child, Every Day." And without a robust, empowered D E I program, I don't know how we achieve that. We must have strong D E I, and I will support that on the board.
The next question will begin with Mr. Ricks. Is any part of your campaign endorsed or funded by any entity related to the DeVos Family or Moms for Liberty or a similar type of organization?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Autton?
No.
Ms. Behrens?
No.
Ms. Crafton?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Siegler?
In no way, shape, or form.
Mr. Lippett?
Not now, not ever.
Ms. West?
No.
The next question will begin with Mr. Smith. In wake of the court's stay on changes to Title IX, what does the current Wald Lake Consolidated School Board of Education believe that it is proper to enact these changes as policy before the U.S. Supreme Court rules on the pending legislation? Why does the current school board believe it's appropriate?
Sure. It is federal law that we must protect it, and it truly underscores the need to protect our marginalized and underserved in our district. We need to believe in the success of all students and champion those efforts to make sure we have the funds to support them. When we think about Title IX, it's really, we want our students to be safe, feel included, and be given the tools to succeed. It's more than just what you hear about that. I don't know all the answers, but I know that it truly affects Title I, II, III, and Head Start and Reading Recovery. I, myself, as someone who participated in the Head Start program in this school district, that can be impacted, and I believe it protects not only our students but our staff and community at large, and we need to make sure that we follow the law.
Ms. Autton.
Title IX is a 1972 federal law which guaranteed sex equality in all federally-funded education programs. This leveled the playing field for girls and women, increased admissions for women, opened the door for women in college sports, and for women to participate in graduate programs. It was a huge triumph for women. It is not just about sports. Under the Biden radical gender ideology agenda, Title IX has been rewritten to say, "No discrimination on the basis of sexual or gender identity rather than sex." This immerses young minds in learning environments that conditions them to believe that the biological idea of sex is false. This is dangerous. The majority of Americans oppose this, and the courts are rightfully addressing this, and so we think it is appropriate to push the pause button before a change of policy in our school district.
Ms. Behrens.
To say that we need to quickly adopt the rewritten Title IX regulations because it is the law now indicates, I think, how little thought is being given to what a travesty this so-called law is. The President and the Department of Education do not have the power to unilaterally rewrite a law that Congress passed. It is unconstitutional. It violates the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. It also violates the Disabilities in Education Act. The regulation is now written to override any conflicting state or federal law that gets in its way. The scare tactic that our opponents use is to say that federal funding will be withdrawn if our district doesn't quickly update their policy to be in compliance. To date, no school has ever had their funding pulled for being noncompliant with Title IX, nor have they been sued by the federal government. There are eight lawsuits against the federal government over this. Twenty-six states have signed on to it. The U.S. Supreme Court, in a unanimous decision, is allowing injunctions against the regulation to stand. We need to put a pause on adopting this policy.
Ms. Crafton.
I had the privilege of doing my oath of office in June of '24, and in that oath, you vow to uphold the Constitution and to follow law. I am not a Title IX expert. I have met with the Title IX expert in our district, and he has assured me that the changes that have been made to Title IX are mostly around the process of investigation, and that it is of our attorney's legal opinion that we must implement this law. I am not here to debate what a president decided to do about a law, but I can tell you, I take my oath of office very seriously. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler.
Title IX is signed into effect as no person on the basis of sex shall be excluded from participation on sports. It deals with universal equity. It is a federal law. It offers protection, dignity, respect, and stability for all involved to succeed in a safe environment and to be successful. I do not see this as a problem. We have never had a request of biological males looking to participate in women's sports in our district. It is of interest to note that we have received requests for women to play in men's sports. We do not set the policy of the Michigan High School Athletic Association, which recognizes and supports Title IX. If we believe in equity for all, this is something we will need to continue to support and review and address as time goes forward.
Mr. Lippett.
Yeah, so we will begin by following the law, of course. You know, as I said in my opening, I'm the father of three daughters, right? And so the protections of Title IX from harassment or discrimination as a woman, these are guaranteed through the law. The fact that we are, the motto of our district is "Every Child, Every Day," this means it extends to everybody, regardless of their sex, race, creed, and sexual orientation. This is not up for debate. Everybody should be protected under Title IX. And I'll just say one last thing about, there was a statistic, for those of you that know the Trevor Project, that 40% of high school students who identify as LGBTQ, 40% of those people that identify, that, let me say it again, the LGBT community in high school, 40% of them have had suicidal ideation. The protections of Title IX allow us to limit that. I will tell you, schools that enact Title IX properly and have gender-affirming care there, suicide rates drop 50%.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Ms. West.
So it's absurd to suggest that Title IX rewrite protects children and promotes our district motto of "Every Child, Every Day." How does it include the majority of girls who don't want to have boys in the bathrooms or locker rooms? How does it include the majority of girls who don't want to have to compete with biological boys in sports and reduce their chances for scholarships? Clearly, this version of Title IX, if adapted in our district, would mean "Not Every Child, Not Every Day." This is what our opponents are promoting. This rewritten regulation violates First Amendment rights of freedom of speech and religion. It violates the Due Process Clause in the Fourteenth Amendment. This regulation opens the door to indoctrinating children that they are born in the wrong body. If a student is misgendered or incorrect pronouns are used, teachers and students can be charged with sexual harassment. Compelling emotive speech, such as compelling the use of pronouns, is a violation of First Amendment rights. We absolutely need to put a pause on adapting a policy fraught with so many legal problems and much opposition to it.
Mr. Ricks.
Most polls show that even The Washington Post acknowledged last year that most Americans don't believe it's even possible for a gender that differs from that assigned at birth. It's not science, it's ideology. This amendment undermines parents. A child's chosen new identity can be hidden from parents under the force of law by school officials crafting gender support plans. Teachers are at risk of violating Title IX if they don't sufficiently hide a child's gender-fluid identity from its parents. We believe that voters in our school district, whether parents or teachers, regardless of party affiliation, do not support sacrificing the rights of women to a vocal and radical minority that is attempting to manipulate federal law. Since our opponents say they value transparency, we would ask them to state whether biological boys should be allowed into private spaces, bathrooms, or of girls or compete in their sports. Yes or no? Our Back to Basics team, Autton, Behrens, West, and Ricks, is the team that truly will support girls, teachers, and parents. We say stop the rush to endorse an unquestionably illegal and harmful law.
The next question will begin with Ms. Autton. Do you believe that transgender students have a place in W L C S D, and should their pronouns and names be respected in this district?
Could you repeat that question for me, please?
Do you believe that transgender students have a place in W L C S D, and should their pronouns and names be respected in this district?
I believe all children have a place in our district because it is "Every Child, Every Day." The pronouns in which somebody chooses to be addressed by is one's personal opinion. Should our district honor that? Should we change what 28 other students for two? I'm not certain. I would have to ask the community, parents, teachers, administration, and I think that would warrant a survey.
Ms. Behrens.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Do you believe that transgender students have a place in W L C S D? Should their pronouns and names be respected in this district?
The motto in our school district is "Every Child, Every Day." Every child needs to be included and respected. It is not any different when we talk about transgender students or any other type of student. So that's not open for debate. I think they need support, and they need to feel that they are included on the issue of using pronouns. I think that is an issue that needs to be discussed with teachers, with members of the community, with parents. I think there's some First Amendment speech rights as well as... I think there's some First Amendment speech rights as well as far as compelling people to use pronouns that they believe are contradictory to their values and their beliefs. And so, I'm not a, a proponent that that has to be a given and has to be implemented for those students.
Ms. Crafton?
Respect. The behaviors and the way that you treat a human being show how you feel about them. And I support all children. Trans kids, non-binary kids, gay kids, straight kids, blue kids, purple kids. I support kids. If they ask to have a preferred name used or a different pronoun, I'm a hundred percent in to support them. Cause you know what? It is hard to be a kid today. And if they have the guts to say that they are having gender dysphoria, they aren't making it up. If you don't actually know what a trans person, actually try to meet one of them. They're lovely, lovely human beings. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler?
Every child, every day is that. Respecting every child, every day. Respecting our faculty, every child, every day. Every faculty member, every day. Respect for all students. Pronouns should be honored. For years, it was Ms., Mr., Mrs. There was no Ms. And then suddenly, Ms. joined the list of pronouns and we readily accepted that. We have supported all students in all opportunities and all endeavors and given them a choice to be representative of what they want. It is their personal identity. It is their personal being. It is their comfort level and this is what we need to do going forward.
Mr. Lippett?
Yeah, the, the answer is hard yes. Uh, I do support our transgender students and I support the notion of them using whatever pronoun, uh, makes them comfortable. I, I, I disagree in the sense with, with one of our other, uh, running mates that, uh, it's not up to teachers. This is, we, we approach them with caring and empathy. The, Ms. Crafton said it very well. These people have a very, it's hard enough being a kid, let alone being a transgender kid in our schools. The very least we can do is show the compassion and, and empathy by calling them what their preferred pronoun is. I, I don't, I can't imagine a situation where we wouldn't do that.
Ms. West?
Um, so I believe, yes, we should definitely be supporting all students because our motto is every child, every day. These students are here for an education, period. Their sexual orientation is not up for debate. It's not up for us to decide. Um, that's for them to have for themselves. Um, as far as pronouns go, I think that, that is up to that person whether they decide to go ahead and address them by their preferred pronouns or not, um, based on their morals and values. But I think that having, giving them respect and dignity, um, kindness, that always is important, always important. It should be coming forthright.
Mr. Ricks?
Uh, like everybody else has stated, I, I agree. I support and respect all children, um, their pronouns and whatever they need to identify as. I support all of that.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Ms. Crafton, my fellow Slate member said it beautifully. Uh, it is about respect and honoring and having the students feel seen and feel included in this district. Uh, our goal as safety is to ensure Wild Lake children and the students that it's a safe and welcoming place of learning for all students. And that's part of being seen and feeling included, that they can be who they truly are inside. And I wholeheartedly, absolutely support both those statements.
The next question begins with Ms. Behrens. What role do you think parents should play in curriculum decisions?
Well, I do believe there is a role for parental input on curriculum. Now, various school districts do invite parents to serve on long-range planning committees to provide input on curriculum and textbooks. There is a concern that parents may be obstructionist and come with an agenda to promote. But I would say that the curriculum that the school chooses also may represent an agenda in viewpoints. There's no such thing as neutrality on this issue. Therefore, I think it would be wise to include a wide variety of parental viewpoints on the issue of curriculum choices.
Ms. Crafton?
This, the curriculum of the state of Michigan is set by the State Board of Education. Uh, the role of the school district board of education is to, uh, evaluate, hire, evaluate, and support the superintendent. The superintendent then establishes committees and procedures, uh, in order to determine the curriculum that aligns to those state standards. Parents can be involved in those review committees and I think we welcome that. Parents also play a crucial role in helping support their students' learning at home. Getting a book into their hands in the summer, offering for them to take some extracurriculars if they have the time. The role of the parent is crucial in education. It's just not in making curriculum decisions. That's the role of our educators.
Mr. Siegler?
As I stated before, I am not an educator. I am a parent, I am a community member, I am a board member. We have curriculum that are brought to the board for adaption. Our job is, as a board member, is to review that. We receive feedback at the podium via email, via message, by a phone call from the community members who are concerned or have input and want to have input on that. Our job is to listen, to take that back to the administration, and to represent what the parents have said as a concern to the administration, if there is a concern. You know, we're, we're in a very fortunate situation where curriculum is a strong part of our structure. It is the mainframe of our structure in this district. We have worked very hard to improve this on a regular basis and will going forward.
Mr. Lippett?
Yeah, we continue to rely on our education professionals, uh, throughout the state, starting with the Michigan State Board of Education, uh, and having the opportunity of our superintendent, cabinet, and staff to be able to administer this curriculum in such a way to achieve measurable results that the board in turn, in turn audits of that. But the parent's role is, is a for-sure element to this. Like they, they have the opportunity to meet with the superintendent, they have every opportunity to meet with the board, speak, uh, at the board meetings. I love the, uh, the opportunity for parents to engage us through email and text and other things. They can be involved in the PTA process. We listen to these things. These are really important parts of it. And as a parent myself, we, I've been engaged myself talking about, uh, pieces of curriculum that I, I thought was an opportunity for the district. So, I think it's a real opportunity for parents to get heavily involved and, and talk about these things.
Ms. West?
Yes, I agree that there should be parental input, um, on curriculum, which is to give feedback, not determine what the curriculum is. Some school districts bring in engineers or math professors who are parents in the district to look at math textbooks, for example. The input from parents who have expertise and experience in the work world could be very valuable in determining what will educate and prepare children for the best, the best for future employment. When parents are involved, they can ask questions, provide feedback, and hold schools and policymakers accountable for their actions. In turn, it can build trust between parents and teachers and administration as the community is assured there's transparency in what is being taught to children.
Mr. Ricks?
I agree with my fellow Back to Basic candidates. It is important that parents know what is being taught so they can make informed decisions on giving the school, school district input on curriculum. The Parents Bill of Rights also states that school districts should consider community feedback when making decisions. Open communication is always a good thing. We don't want walls of distrust and misunderstanding developed between parents and schools. I'd make one final point. To leave curriculum choices to teaching professionals alone is not always advisable. As an example, decades of teachers using balanced literacy approaches in reading is now being challenged as flawed and not based on research. So, the so-called experts do not always have the right approach.
Mr. Smith?
As stated before as well, I, I'm not an educator, but I trust the knowledge and experience of, uh, the superintendent and the cabinet member that are making those decisions. It is our role as parents and as school board members, of course, to ask questions, ask probing questions, submit input, as was stated by my fellow Slate members, uh, so eloquently. They can come to the meetings, they can come there, they can input, they can meet with the cabinet members, have questions about it. Every right as a parent, you have that. But I am always going to, uh, trust the knowledge and experience of that and we know that things are always ever-changing. And it's great, you know, we have these new best practices that we can, we can lean on and we can, we can glean from that and move forward. And we set policies and procedures. We don't manage the day-to-day operations. That's what we have the cabinet for. And that is what I believe that, uh, that they're there for, to set the role, the administration, and we ask questions and parents have that opportunity as well.
Ms. Auton?
I'm going to agree with everyone on this panel and I believe we need to strike a symbiotic relationship when it comes to entrusting the educators and the parents involving all the above.
The next question will begin with Ms. Crafton. Will you commit to attending the Michigan Association of School Boards professional development training?
Absolutely. In fact, I've already done a bunch of it. Uh, as I stated before, I was appointed to the board in June of '24. Uh, and shortly thereafter, went to a training conference where I dedicated a weekend in Gaylord with a couple of my, uh, co-candidates and learned a lot about basic school law, basic finance, um, the role of a school board member, uh, and, uh, another very important point, uh, how to work collaboratively on a board together, especially when you have differing viewpoints. Uh, training is essential and I'm committed to, oh, I also am going to another training the weekend before Election Day. Uh, I'm dedicating a Thursday through Sunday to be in Lansing, taking more training from M A, M A S B. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler?
I am in total support of M A S B classes. Uh, I have had the opportunity to, to take many over the course of my tenure on the board. It's a very valuable asset. As I said, you know, we can always continue to learn. We can always learn from other districts as, as well as the presenters in the, uh, classes. It's a rare opportunity. A lot of this is personal time, free time, weekends, as Mr. Crafton and Ms. Lippett will say, had learned at the last training. It's very long. It's not just one class and you're done. You could be going for nine to twelve hours a day. Uh, you know, I take, I, as I joke and I give Mr. Lippett credit, they had driven up at one o'clock in the morning. When I talked to him the following evening at nine o'clock, he's, his comment to me is, "I feel like my brain is draining out of my ears." And I can, I understand and appreciate that because that's the intensity sometimes of those classes.
Mr. Lippett?
Yeah, I absolutely commit, uh, to that. I, I've already been to one, as Ms. Crafton and Mr. Siegler already, uh, pointed out. I spent a, a long weekend at this. And I'll tell you one of the, one of the added benefits of M A S B that no one really, it should be on the brochure and it's not. The classes are great, continuing education as a concept, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of. But one of the real benefits of M A S B for the, for the weekend was, uh, sitting with these board members from, uh, from boards big and small throughout the state and learning from the, their unique opportunities, their unique issues that they face, and just getting a chance to learn from each other, um, in environments that normally we would never get a chance to, to understand. So, um, it's great. You get people from every, uh, political spectrum, but every, um, type of community you can think of and, uh, you really, uh, learn a lot in, in that kind of camaraderie.
Ms. West?
Yes, as an educator, um, I believe professional development's important. I have to attend many classes, um, to make sure that I'm up to date on, on my continuing ed credits. And I believe just opportunity to learn is always important. So, whether it's M A S B or another, uh, forum, um, I'm happy to learn and just continue to, you know, broaden my education in, um, as a school board trustee and to better our community.
Mr. Ricks?
Uh, yes, I would one hundred percent participate in any kind of, uh, continuing education and training, uh, that there was to offer. I've done several of those with my career, uh, with OSHA and other safety-involved things through my, my, my job. Um, it's, we're always looking to learn and, and get better at what we do.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, within my own profession as a city clerk, professional development is key every time. I think that throughout your life, as you grow, you always have to, to learn, continue to learn. You can always learn something new. As was stated, I, I remember looking back, fourteen years ago when I first started, I was a lot younger and I was able to participate in M A S B. And I think, uh, the amazing skills and the, the assets and the tools that they provided to me and the toolkit were, were unfounding and I was, uh, extremely fortunate to be able to do that and I would gladly continue on that because I think, as was stated by my fellow Slate, uh, it's, it's not just that, it's camaraderie that you build with other, uh, school board members across the, the state and the, the questions that you can ask with each other and you can learn. It's not just the classes there, but it is, it's learning from what other schools are going with, going through and how best to bring some of those ideas back to the superintendent and cabinet.
Ms. Auton?
Of course, I would attend any training that would offer pioneering, innovative tools for the future of our students and a better understanding as to why we're seeing our declining enrollment, teachers leaving. What can we do better to retain those teachers and the students in our district?
Ms. Behrens?
Yes, I think training for, uh, school board members as well as for our teachers is essential for school board, school board members. I think training and, uh, understanding the complexities of financing, uh, school districts, how to, uh, learn to have a collaborative relationship with our superintendent and, and administration, how to handle differences of opinion, how to craft policy and vision and emission statements that the school district should be guided by. And professional development in terms of teachers, you know, it's, it's very difficult for teachers when there's changing teaching methods or changing curricula, uh, not to have the, the training in a timely way to help them with that. I have spoken with teachers in the past who've said, you know, "We're given this new, uh, unit of material to teach, I'm not sure how to do that." So, professional development, just like in my field of medicine, continuing medical education is essential.
And the last question, we will begin with Mr. Siegler. Some districts and states are considering cell phone bans. Should this school district be considering such a phone, cellphone ban?
You know, as I look at cell phones, as a parent, I believe there is no educational need for cell phones in elementary or middle schools. But there is an emotional and security need felt by many of our students. I'm in favor of limiting them, limiting them in the high school, putting them in a storage case or cartridge while in the class, but having them available in the need or the, you know, if an issue arises. In some classes, they could be used for educational purposes. That's why I don't want to see a total ban on cell phones. You know, you take your device to school day and you're using your device or a device supplied by the school to research something or do something in the class. So, it is needed. But again, my feeling is we need to increase personal face-to-face discussion to move our children forward in much-needed interpersonal communication skills.
Thank you. Mr. Lippett?
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of the notion of a, of a cellphone ban, as it were. I, I think the question actually is asking, is it a distraction to students or are they using it for some form of, of cheating? And I, I would just say, in, in those cases, we should come up with policies to be able to restrict, uh, for that. But I do support the notion of it, first off, as a safety tool. Uh, I do, um, I, I do think there is some value to that. Uh, and I also, uh, now that I've had a chance to query the, uh, number of principals in our district about, uh, Mr. Siegler's correct. Uh, the cell phones are actually being used, uh, specifically in high school levels in a, in a way that I think is, is necessary. So, uh, so no, I don't support a ban. But there are reasonable practices, reasonable processes that we can apply that, um, that solve the problem of distraction or cheating while continuing to support, uh, safety and student achievement.
Ms. West?
So, we do have policies right here in Wild Lake already regarding cell phones. Um, they're now allowed in elementary schools. Um, very limited use in middle school and really, it's up to the teacher in high schools. Um, but it's been hotly debated topic issue for about a decade now. Um, the calls for outright banning of cell phones in schools has intensified over the recent years because of distractions. Um, this summer, actually, Los Angeles, um, which is the second-largest nation, school in the nation, um, announced that it'll ban cell phones outright starting in January. The pro-banning arguments is that it's a big distraction and prevents students from paying attention in classes. Um, and banning them to keep students sta, safe. Consider a ban, but I don't think we should make the teachers the enforcers. Those who oppose banning say that students need to learn to use them responsibly. We need parents and teachers in our community to weigh in on this and give feedbacks to the school board and prepare an informed, can prepare an informed decision on this policy, on this issue.
Mr. Ricks?
A growing number of studies have linked children's use of smartphones and social media to their deteriorating mental health and with increasing rates of anxiety and depression. For those schools that have instituted bans, they note that students are more interactive with each other, more engaged in classroom activities. Students are less stressed as they don't have to think about who is liking their social media post or worry if someone is making fun of what they're wearing, et cetera, et cetera. In between classes, students are talking to other students instead of everybody walking with their heads down on the phone. I don't think phones should be out during class, but it is reasonable to allow them during lunch hours. during lunch hours.
Mr. Smith.
No. I actually had this discussion with my daughter, who's at middle school, and we had a wonderful discussion about this, within reason, of course, because it does come down to security and safety for students. And we need to look at the best practices and talk with teachers and administrators and the principals that have a plan. And I asked her, you know, point-blank, "What is it?" And she states it, she keeps it in her locker. And I know that there's many times where, you know, we've forgotten a form, just this week, we happened to forget a form or a couple dollars that had to be dropped off, and we were able to quickly do that and get communicated, and I think it's a wonderful tool. But I think we also have to take appropriate steps to really think about mental health, bullying, and safety that is also involved with it. So I'm fully in favor of safety pouches, of providing that. But, you know, the other key thing to that too is that we... She has a friend that has diabetes, and they worked out something that they can actually carry it to make sure, because there are different things that are involved with students that... So you work with the plans and with the administration. But we need to think into the future because they are not going away.
Ms. Auten.
Since we're all sharing our situations with our children, I'm proud to say I have a junior at Northern, and he is participating in the OSTC program. That situation, and many others, warrants them having a cellphone, driving back and forth to the different buildings. We know that there's going to be exceptions to this rule, but where do we kind of have a little paradigm shift back to, "We all survived in school without a cellphone," right? So there's some Back to Basics that can be applied to that. Furthermore, most schools now have what is known as one-to-one computing programs, meaning that every student receives a school-issued laptop. Prior to this, there were a lot of educational reasons to have laptops and smartphones, but one-to-one is no longer necessary. For many schools, students are allowed to use their cellphones during lunch outside on school grounds during passing periods. But there is also concerns from parents who want to be able to contact their children. They can message their children through contacting the front office. Regardless, parents and teachers need to give their views on this before.
Your time is up. Ms. Behrens.
You know, ABC News recently reported that in Cleveland, students were planning fights to happen on their cellphones and texted each other during the day about it. They would identify in their messaging where to meet up for the fight and record it on their phones and post it to social media. Now, this is an extreme example, but it shows how even violence occurs from cellphone usage. Some schools report that students watch Netflix on their phones during class, and some report that kids even use gambling apps on their phones to place bets. However, many parents want to be able to reach their kids and keep track of them. Maybe a good approach would be to have phone caddies, or in some places it's called phone hotels, in each classroom, where students leave their devices at the beginning of class. They police themselves. It alleviates the teacher having to become the phone cop.
Thank you.
I haven't gone yet on the cellphone one.
I checked too soon. All right, go ahead.
This is an opportunity for me to agree with Dr. Behrens. We do have cellphone caddies in use at every high school. It is not policed by teachers, it is self-policed by students, and our procedures are very simple. You're not using your cellphone in your high school classroom until you're done with the instruction and the assignment for the day. But then, when you're done completing the work that you have to do that day, we're preparing you for the real world. I look out here and I'm seeing people using their cellphones right now. We're adults and we're using our cellphones. So we... That's true, some people aren't, but some people are. And I really think that we need to intentionally prepare our young people for the future, not to go back to basics, but to move forward together into the future. And cellphones aren't going anywhere.
That concludes the time for questions. The candidates will now be given one minute to make a closing statement in the reverse order of the opening statements, beginning with Mr. Smith, then Mr. Ricks, Ms. West, Mr. Lippett, Mr. Siegler, Ms. Crafton, Ms. Behrens, and Ms. Auten. Mr. Smith.
Thank you once again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this evening and to the community for being present to give us some time to express our thoughts and honest answers to some tough questions. As you know, our district is on the precipice of many changes, which can be no doubt be challenging, and I'm asking for your vote to let me use my voice to help navigate through that journey. I promise to be a champion of education and achievement by empowering our students, teachers, staff, and administration through opportunities to thrive in their personal growth and their long-term success in life. There's a lot of work to be done, and we need dedicated voices at the table to make the tough decisions for the future of our district. It is time to bring back stability and to work collaboratively to focus on student success and safety in our buildings so we can continue to go forward together. I would be honored to have your vote this November 5th, along with my fellow Slate members Crafton, Lippett, Siegler, and Smith. Thank you.
I appreciate this opportunity, which I've had, to share my vision and ideas with the members of this community. Again, I thank the League of Women Voters for your devotion to the importance of voting in our society. I believe in focusing on academics in our schools. Politics and ideologies have no business in our tax-funded public schools. Discipline should be stored in the classrooms. Teachers need to be valued and respected. Bullying needs to be eliminated in our schools. We need to teach our children moral principles, work ethic, kindness, and respect. This starts at home. I truly believe that our great school district can be even better as we focus on Back to Basics and setting proper foundations to move forward. My team, Auten, Behrens, West, and Ricks, are firmly committed to this, and we humbly ask for your votes. Thank you.
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and PTSA for having us and part of the community coming out tonight. If elected, I'll bring accountability, integrity, and transparency to the table. I'll explain how I came to vote on proposals and purchases, especially those that are more controversial, allowing the community to understand my perspective while always having students' educational needs as a top priority. I'm a hard worker and am dedicated to seeing a project through to the end. I have been actively involved in the district and community since my youth. As noted in my opening statement, I have no problem successfully taking on projects ahead of them. I aim to take in all information, researching fully, and implementing policies that are in the best interest of the whole community. As an educator, I understand what teachers truly need to successfully implement their lessons while improving our test scores. I want both families and staff to strive to come to and stay in Wild Lake, making it a place they believe will benefit their families and students and have the foundation of a successful future. So I'm asking for your support to elect me, Lisa West, as well as my teammates.
Thank you. Mr. Lippett.
Again, my thanks to League of Women Voters and PTSA. I don't think it's too strong a statement to say that this election is the most important in our district's history. At stake is what makes our district so special. Stability, student success, and safety, these aren't just campaign slogans. These are a call to action for me, both as a parent and a candidate. And through these values, I am committed to preventing board overreach, including board members stepping into our classrooms. I'm dedicated to the notion of every child, every day, and the protections and support that come with that, particularly for those who are marginalized. And I have tremendous faith in our teachers and staff, who are the foundation of our district, and I'm going to do everything in my power to reinforce their ability to be true inspirations to our students. Lastly, I commit to making our district an attractive destination for families and teachers as we navigate the many challenges ahead of us. On behalf of the class of 2024, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Siegler.
Again, I wish to express my deep appreciation to the League of Women Voters, Wild Lake Schools, and our PTSA council, as well as all of you for being here this evening. I feel I am a global thinker. I feel that I bring experience, knowledge, a long history of dedication, and the ability to work and listen with all to the board table. I like to analyze, to research. I have no preconceived ideas when presented or addressing a subject. I need to listen and learn first. I need to understand to help others. I value community feedback and input. I have and will be a voice for all within the Wild Lake School District. I look at this as a community school district, not a consolidated school district. And as we move forward with a slate of Crafton, Lippett, Siegler, and Smith, I am asking you for your support and your vote now and through November, along with my Slate members. Thank you.
Thanks to the League of Women Voters and PTSA council for hosting this great event tonight, and thank you to each of you for giving a couple of hours of your busy, busy schedule to be an informed voter. The fact that you're here, learning about the issues, it should be celebrated. As you've heard tonight, much is at stake in this election, and it will require each and every one of you to talk to your neighbors and your friends about what you heard here tonight. I hope that you see yourself in my responses. I'm a dedicated mom, a passionate volunteer, and a champion for all kids. Each and every one of the students in this district should feel seen, supported, and safe. That's why I'm honored to be running on a slate that is prioritizing student success, safety, and stability. I commit to collaborative, stable leadership that nurtures this inclusive environment and helps move our community forward together. A vote for class of 2024 will move us together. Thanks.
Ms. Behrens.
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and PTSA for the opportunity to share my thoughts and that of my fellow candidates and the vision for our school district. I believe in practical, common sense solutions. Our campaign theme of Back to Basics honors the wishes of parents across the community who desire to keep politics and all that it entails out of schools and to concentrate and concentrate instead on academics, ensuring that kids can read properly, that they are capable in math, and that they feel confident to enter the workforce. I believe in honoring the values and traditions of parents while delivering high-quality education to their children. I want to see order, discipline, and respect for teachers restored to our classrooms. I don't believe in promoting the status quo when problems need to be fixed. Children are at stake. I believe school board members need to exercise a more active role in facilitating this and not be so passive. So I ask for you to vote for Rebecca Behrens and my fellow candidates, Tricia Auten, Lisa West, and Steve Ricks.
Thank you. Ms. Auten.
First and foremost, my gratitude to the PTSA, League of Women Voters, and all you community members that took the time to come out here and listen. I will bring a positive curiosity to the board. I will ask questions and seek to understand so that I can formulate thoughtful responses so that I can help be part of the solutions to move our district forward. Together, we can build a stronger, healthier future for our children. I am eager to bring fresh ideas to... Our community members deserve the hard work I intend to put into this commitment. I believe there is a desperate need within our district to get back to basics, including comprehension, skills, proficiency, a secure and healthy environment. For starters, it will become my personal mission to eradicate energy drinks from the vending machines in our schools. Again, myself, Tricia Auten, along with my Slate running mates, Behrens, West, and Ricks, would love for you to vote for us November 5th.
The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and Wild Lake Television, WLTV, for making this forum possible. This presentation is copyrighted 2024 by the League of Women Voters. All rights reserved. Any recording may only be shown in its entirety. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, visit vote411.org. Re-broadcast times of the forum will be on the League of Women Voters Oakland area, WLVOA.org website. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. Remember to vote on November 5th. Voting is not a spectator sport. Everyone, have a good evening.